Want to thank everybody for joining us. Welcome to the Denton Matters Municipal Candidate Forum for 2020. My name is Matt Pernetta. I have Tamsin Price on the line. And we're going to be talking to Deb Armenter, who is running for city council at large, place five. Just a quick hit. Early voting starts October 13th. November 3rd, we have the general election. And this year is kind of special because we have the municipal elections at the very bottom of the ballot. So make sure you go all the way down to the bottom of the ballot. That being said, welcome. Thank you for joining us, Deb. For those people who aren't heavily immersed in Deb Armenter, can you give us just a couple of minutes about who you are? You know, and why you're doing this?
Sure. So my name is Deb Armentar. I've been a Denton resident since 2002. I am a mom and I'm an English professor. I teach 18th century British literature and gender studies and literature in the Holocaust at University of North Texas. I love teaching. I became very involved in local politics around the time of the fracking ban and the repeal of that fracking ban in the face of House Bill 40, the ban on bans from Austin. That really pushed me from the sidelines political observer into a full-time activist. So I am finishing now. My first term on city council has been a joy and an honor to serve. I was inspired to run in part by the public service of Keely Briggs, who has been my district representative in District Two. I happen to live in District Two, but I serve place five, which is a citywide position. And she was somebody who has always put people first, people before profits. And she would always talk to everybody like a real person, talk respectfully to people, never top-down. And that is the kind of government that I want to serve me. And so I'm just here to really serve like how I want to be served with a listening ear and from the bottom up instead of top-down.
So you have been given or bestowed, for lack of a better term, a moniker of dangerous Deb, which you have sort of taken over and reclaimed with a lot of empowerment. So what is it about you that makes you dangerous?
Yeah, so that's a very good question. I suppose I'm dangerous to people who feel very comfortable with the status quo. This term, this election season, the dangerous has to do with policing issues. Last time, I was also called dangerous Deb the last time I ran and won. And it was for my advocacy, at least I think it was, because you know, my advocacy for immigrants' rights and against Senate Bill Four, there were postcards that went out that said, "Welcome to Denton Sanctuary City." And it was very racist. And actually, I think ended up winning me the election. I hope this negative campaign cycle does the same. This year, the focus is for these dangerous, dangerous Deb people with these hateful mailers and signs. The focus is on my stance on policing, which is that we need to do zero-based budgeting in all departments, including police and community development, which are kind of opposite departments. In this sense, when it comes to funding, in the sense that police department, I believe, is overfunded, incrementally funded every year. They get incremental increases every year. And most of the excess goes towards so-called community policing, which sounds really benign, but it's actually what used to be called broken windows policing. In the, you know, a term made famous by the, or at least in my memory, my experience with it from the Giuliani era on New York PD. And it's about having lots of police patrols just kind of roaming the street, looking for signs of potential trouble. Led to a lot, leads to stop and frisk. And even when there are no citations or arrests given, it gives people a sense that they're being constantly policed under surveillance. It makes some people feel safer. The people who feel safer, they tend to be white, wealthier people who are homeowners and who don't want people of color moving into their neighborhoods or feeling at home in their own city. So it is, it is a really sinister kind of policing and disproportionate amount of money goes there. Millions and millions, we've got a $37 million police budget now. Meanwhile, on the other side, we've got community development, which I call kind of cynically, you know, the Department of Poor People's Needs, which I consider the greatest need. This should be top priority in Denton. We need to lift up people who are at the bottom, who are not being represented on council. It is, it's not just, doesn't just come from my big heart, dangerously big heart, but also comes from my sense of economic development, you know, to stimulate the economy. We need to make sure that people are housed. People have jobs. And people don't get their power turned off. We need to protect public health and safety. These are the kind of things that actually Community Development Department does. Public safety doesn't come from just throwing more money into broken windows policing. So anyway, that's why they think I'm dangerous, because that's what I stand for. It's dangerous to certain people. For other people, that is public safety. It's about bringing public health and safety to the forefront and zero-based budgeting and not just assuming that throwing more money at the police makes us safer.
So when we talk about this kind of thing, you know, and have a moment to actually kind of let a conversation breathe rather than talking in, you know, basically bullet points and, you know, quick hits. One of the things that we hear over and over again from the other side, and I believe the the postcards that are going out always say that Deb wants to defund the police. What you just said is actually very different from that, right? It sounds like you're talking about de-escalation, you know, across the board. How do people who want to make sure that we have those resources, you know, make sure that the communication that we're getting out there makes more sense to people who just shut us off after thinking, "Defund the police" is a dangerous thing?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. You know, it's a balance because I do hear people in the, from the public. You know, there were cries, in our cries at protest nationwide, calling to defund the police. And I don't want to, you know, shut those people out and say, "That's not what I want." Instead, I say, "I want what you want," but I don't call it "defunding." That's not the term that I use. But what I, you know, what I want comes directly from the Black Lives Matter protest movement. It is the call to reallocate funds from policing and to put those funds back into the communities that are most harmed by policing. So, you know, there, at the end of the day, it's really a matter of semantics. I don't call that "defunding," but there are people on both sides of the issue who do. So to them, I say, okay, you know, to anybody, I will say, you know, "Okay, call it what you want." That's not the term I use. But let's talk about, let's look at the money, where it's going, and let's look at what our goals are. And by the way, everybody agrees, we want public safety. I've never heard anybody say, at least I've never heard anybody say, "I don't want public safety for Denton." It's just we have different ways of defining it. I'm really interested in data. I'm very, very data-driven. And I was, I was impressed to hear even our police chief say at a recent Committee on Persons with Disabilities meeting, which is a committee, by the way, that I'm really proud to have called for shortly after I was elected to council, in talking about the Take Me Home program, which had come under question. Somebody had asked, "How do we know this plan is effective?" And he said, "Well, that's, it's not necessarily provable by data, much like how police patrols driving around, you know, not responding to crime." He didn't use the term "broken windows policing," but that's what he was talking about, the community policing, just driving around. You know, we can't prove that that has a positive effect on public safety. We can't prove it makes people safer. I was very pleased to hear him say that. And so I do think that he knows that. I think that there are some people in police who know that, but it's scary for them because a lot of the, you know, police culture depends on this broken windows policing. It's very different from the fire department, which is about, the fire department and EMS, which is about when there's an emergency, you come out and you're there. And by the way, that, and police department does that. And I want to have response to, investigators and crime analysts respond to crimes with violent crimes with actual victims as soon as they happen. We've got pretty good response time, but we need to keep up dispatch. And we need, we need better investigating. We need rape kit testing. I would like us to see us invest in doing that in-house because that would save time. Anyway, sorry, I'm probably kind of off topic now. But you know, all that is to say that I think that these labels can be really distracting. And I think we need to focus on the substance of, you know, what we're talking about, what's underneath those labels and focus on solutions.
And before we go to the next question, you mentioned something real quick in there, and that was, that was the Take Me Home program. And that's something that's being looked at to try and reduce harm to people, you know, who have, you know, MHMR kind of concerns. Can you give us a little bit of details about that and where that might stand right now?
So, yeah, you know, so Take Me Home program. I was really disappointed. You know, when I first saw about it, saw that it was coming out. And that's, that's kind of how it was announced. It, council didn't vote on it. It was just, oh, you know, here's this program. So I immediately thought, you know, because of my involvement with disability rights advocates, I immediately thought of the slogan, which is very deeply integrated into, you know, my philosophy of public service, which is nothing about us without us. And that should be the case, not only when it comes to people with disabilities, but in all matters. And so my first thought was, have people with disabilities been consulted on this plan? And it certainly looked like they hadn't. And it turned out that, no, they hadn't. There were some, I guess, parents of people with disabilities who had been consulted. But this is not a program that is only a missing children program. It's a kind of a missing persons program, missing persons registry program, where anyone could sign up a quote, "loved one" with disabilities. And there was a wide range. You know, you mentioned MHMR. But it's, you know, for, I mean, they just said disabilities. The original publicity surrounding this program mentioned people with autism and autism spectrum and adults with dementia. And you could sign someone up for the program. And then they would be taken home by police if they were lost. And it was kind of written in a way that was presented in a way that was condescending to people with disabilities. That was my sense. But I immediately asked people with disabilities in the community, who I know who have been outspoken about disability rights, "What do you think of this? You know, I'm seeing some red flags, but what do you think?" And, you know, the first thing I was heard was, "Why didn't we get asked?" You know, why didn't even, what did the committee, we've got this committee on people with disabilities. Why didn't they get asked? Why didn't we get asked? You know, and there's a lot of hurt in that. And I understand that. I'm very pleased that those conversations have started happening. And the police chief, as I mentioned before, came and talked to the Committee on People with Disabilities. But I was, I was pretty disappointed by the defensiveness that came immediately. You know, if it were me, I would say, "Oh, my goodness. I'm so sorry I didn't ask." But instead, the response was, "Well, we don't have to ask. You know, we're the police." And that's not going to move us forward. That's not democratic. And it can be real patronizing to adults with disabilities. So, you know, I hope that this will be improved. I actually went and to test the program because I had a number of questions that weren't being, well, they were being answered, but not to my satisfaction. So I didn't really feel like I was getting concrete answers. So I tested it out. I actually went and I signed up my husband, who does have disabilities, as do I. Signed him up for the program to see. Because one of the biggest concerns I was hearing, one of my biggest concerns is, "What about informed consent?" You know, people with disabilities of all kinds, of all kinds, have the right to informed consent. And that's extremely important. And nowhere on that form was there any question about, "Does the person you're signing up know that they're being signed up?" There wasn't even a space for them. They didn't even ask for their phone number or email address so that could be verified or validated. And that was really disturbing to me. You know, and really degrading to people with disabilities, adults with disabilities. So I hope that gets changed.
So at a forum that was, just had this past weekend, you had talked about affordable housing and some ideas that you had for bringing in affordable housing. So I wanted to ask you, what do you consider to be affordable housing? I know in the question that was this past weekend, it was in the 200,000 price range, which is a little high. But, so what do you actually consider to be affordable housing? And how are you going to work to bring that into our community and make sure that we actually get more affordable housing?
Yes, so that's a question. Yeah, and that was, you know, for people who didn't hear, didn't hear that forum. It was a question, it was specifically about, I think the question was about owner-occupied homes, starting in the 200,000 range or at 200,000. And yeah, my immediate response was, "Oh, that's not affordable." And, but of course, you know, affordability is relative. And I hope my answer doesn't sound like a dodge. It's actually a really important answer that, because it's affordable to whom. There are some people who are, you know, people who are, for various reasons, they cannot work, they cannot earn an income. You know, and, and they would be homeless if we don't, and are homeless if we don't provide housing. And for people like that, affordable means that you don't have to pay for housing. That will, so I'm kind of starting with the most controversial category. This is where we say, "Look, there are people who would be living on the street." Or are we going to give them a place where they can live? You know, nothing fancy, but where they can live that is safe and sanitary and decent. So we have to include that too. Because the alternative is not good for anybody. And the alternative costs us money too. It costs us money in, you know, all of the emergency medical measures. And, you know, the services provided to people that we try to provide to people who are living out on the street. So as far, we need tiny homes. I'm trying, kind of trying to like work my way up from the, the most affordable, which is housing for people who really don't have an income. And it's not just that they can't find a job. There are some people who can't work. You know, it's a minority, but that, but there are people like that. So we need tiny homes. And we need to remove obstacles for nonprofits that want to build tiny homes. We need, we have land we can dedicate. We have permits whose fees we can waive. Everything where the city, every area where the city is in charge of the permitting process, where the city has land, you know, there's things that we can do to remove obstacles for tiny homes. And then there's a whole range, range from, for, for working poor people, people who are working, who, you know, work their butts off. But because in the state of Texas, we cannot currently, cities cannot currently raise the, the minimum wage, which is totally unlivable. We're going to have to have housing that is affordable at this, you know, impossible, the impossible current minimum wage so that somebody who has, who is, so that a single parent, you know, who is working a minimum wage job, even, or two minimum wage jobs, can afford to keep themselves and their children housed with utilities. So this is a very low rent or, you know, monthly mortgage payment. But it really depends family to family. And we need to be flexible. And I want to say that, you know, we've got the Denton Housing Authority right here in Denton. And they, they work with HUD. And HUD has its, is of course a federal institution. And they have their own standards of affordability, which I think most people on council would agree, and most people in the public would agree, aren't necessarily what, you know, we would consider affordable. But one thing that a lot of people don't know about Denton Housing Authority is that they would be thrilled to, and I know because I have talked to them, I'm in regular touch with them and with our other nonprofits, be thrilled to work with the city to come up with new definitions of affordability, where they wouldn't have to be depending on HUD all the time. So they're willing to work with us. The city has historically pushed them out. And, you know, and that's a real problem. We also need, you know, we need more tenants' representation on council and, and we need an advisory committee of tenants who will make policy suggestions. Rent control is kind of generally not possible right now in the state of Texas. I hope that can be changed. But there are various kinds of rent control, and we need to look at, and we need lawyers working for this city. We need, we need a city attorney, city attorneys, who are willing to explore all the possibilities to look at how we can help, you know, lift up renters and make, make housing more affordable for them. So anyway, those are just some of the ways, some of the things that we need to look at, the kind of partnerships and thinking outside the box and the ranges of affordability that we need to consider.
So you are already on city council. So you've, you've had your first term already. So I was going to ask you, what are some lessons that you've taken away from your first term, which at times has been a little contentious with the mayor? What are some lessons you've taken away? And how do you plan to apply those lessons to your, your coming term?
That's a really good question. So many lessons. One lesson that I've learned, really the first one that comes to mind is just always, you know, when you're, and I would tell this to anybody who is, even people who are on boards and committees, you know, when you're up there, I say up there, I'm picturing the dais, which is elevated, which I don't like so much. I wish it was lower, more on the level of the people. But, you know, when, when you're up there on the dais or in the work session room, or when you're on Zoom, like we are now, it's really easy to feel like you're in a little bubble where you're working with the people who, you're sitting with your fellow elected representatives and you're working with staff, and you are doing that. But because it's such a bubble, it's easy to lose sight of who you're working for, who you're all working for. And you're working for the public, you're working for the people. And we have, and I wish it was on all the walls, you know, everywhere you went in City Hall, a picture of the city org chart, the city hierarchy, which shows it's like a, a triangle. And at the very tippy-top at the zenith, you've got the people, right under the people, you've got city council, us, the public servants of the people. Under us, you've got the city manager, the city attorney, the council appointees. And so we have to always remember that we are public servants and we're serving the people, the public at the very top. I imagine that the public is in there with us, even when they're not. Of course, it's easier when we're meeting in person in evening meetings where the room is packed. But even on Zoom, or even a work session where there's nobody there, just a couple people there, I imagine it's like, like being a kid imagining you've got, you know, a posse of imaginary friends. It's really, it's about imagination. And, and, you know, and I got to say, ever since the killing of Darius Tarver at the hands of our own police in January, I imagine him up there with me. And I remember, it's a reminder that I, I serve, I serve people even who are no longer living. And, you know, we need to keep, keep all these people really at the forefront of our imagination so much that we can see them. Because it's really easy to forget who you serve. It's really easy to think that we're just serving each other. I love working with my colleagues on council. You know, you mentioned things get contentious with the mayor. That's absolutely true. You know, but there are times where we can be fighting on something. And then, you know, the next item is called and we can be totally in sync on that next item. But anyway, that was a very long answer. And just one thing, but really more than anything else, that's the most important thing. Never forget who you serve and never forget democracy. What democracy is, is what you're doing. You're here to serve democracy.
So you kind of ended on that, you know, serving democracy. And you and I have had kind of exchanges. And hopefully, everyone listening will go with me to the end of this question. But we've had, we've had discussions about the concept of the gadfly. And for people who don't know what the gadfly is, the gadfly is literally a fly that, you know, kind of pesters horses, cows and everything. But, but the thing is, you know, pesters, it can cause, you know, movement and motion. Politically speaking, when we talk about somebody being a gadfly, it's that person who questions, who draws attention to things. And very often, those are the things that kind of make us realize that there is, you know, inefficiencies, there's corruption, there's things that should be, that should be done, you know, over a term. How do you view your position? Or how do you view yourself in that framework? Are there things that, you know, that stick out over your first term that were the, that were the pestering moments that actually turned into something that, you know, that the city needed to be made aware of?
Yeah, and thank you for asking that. You know, it's funny, like, like the dangerous moniker, it's a way that I never thought of myself as dangerous. You know, at first, I kind of, my quote, "Who, me?" Like, you know, Alfred E. Newman, "Who, me? Dangerous?" And then I realized, yeah, I am dangerous to certain kinds of people. That was my reaction to the gadfly moniker. It actually, it came from, as you know, from an article in the Denton Record Chronicle about my activism against the, the gas plant. And I say against because I was then and I still am now against that, that gas plant. But I realized, yeah, that, that is what I do. You know, again, I don't think of it that way. But there is, there's often a truth in how, how people, how people see you. And so I thought about that a lot. You know, and I realized that, yeah, you know, I was, part of it is, you know, I was raised by scientists, really, who, and even though I'm not a scientist, you know, there are people who are a scientist and a doctor, but in a family of scientists, you know, and they're the ones who are always saying, "Prove it to me." We would have discussions at the dinner table. You know, I'm from a Jewish family. And when I brought home my then non-Jewish fiancee to meet the, meet the family, he was shocked at how, he thought we were fighting all the time at the dinner table, at the Shabbat dinner table. And I said, "Well, we're not fighting, we're just talking." You know, and so for me, and you know, I think there's kind of a cultural difference in a way. I'm not saying it's just a Jewish thing, but. I've just always been one to just skip the small talk and just ask the questions that need to be asked. And you know, to not be afraid to get to get to the heart of the matter, get to the bottom of things. Again, it's seen as pestering, but you know, I'm very proud in a number of areas. I'll just say briefly. For instance, when the case of the mask ordinance that we eventually ended up passing. You know, I was the one on on council who from the very beginning. Was saying we need to have a mask ordinance. And it sounded crazy at the time. I kept repeating and I kept repeating. When it comes to fair housing, which is actually something I'm still working on. Because I think that, you know, we don't, I don't think I I know. That that we're not sufficiently trained in fair housing law on city council. And in our planning and development department, and it has has led to some real, I believe, some real liability. Some real problems. And I kept repeating, does this, is this in violation of fair housing? Does this follow fair housing law? And I'll never forget, speaking of the mayor, one time he said, turned to me and said, why are you always talking about fair housing? And it made me so happy because I realized, oh, he. He knows now, he knows, we might not have gone and studied it, you know, but he knows that this is Deb's thing, fair housing, fair housing, fair housing. He said it. I got him to say those words. So again, I don't like, you know, it makes me a little sad that I'm. It's thought of that what to me is just kind of participating in the democratic process and asking questions and working together with other people is seen as needling. But if that's what it's seen as, then I embrace it and and I'm pleased when it does get results and things things end up happening.
So your opponent has recently discussed letting developers. Sort of save the town, I guess. And implied that people with related business interests should serve on boards and commissions. Your approach is different. Can you tell us about your philosophy on on who should be appointed to boards and? How you think that should work?
Yeah, so thank you for mentioning that, you know, and I will say it's. The way, and I know what you're talking about because I've heard him, you know, my opponent talk this way. He's actually speaking to kind of a longstanding tradition and City Hall. Of bringing all stakeholders is the word that's used. You know, to the table. And it sounds so democratic, it sounds so not just benign, but it sounds righteous. Of course, you want to involve all the stakeholders. The problem is when you're talking about development, really when you're talking about anything, but I'll use the example of development. If you say, well, we want to bring. Say, when you're talking about tree ordinance, which is something my opponent's really proud of, that he served on a tree ordinance committee. But he is somebody who for a living, he or one of the things he does is advocate for developers. And you can look him up in our city agendas and he has, you know, a long history of going forward to council. And advocating for developers. I mean, that's a part of his job. It's an honest way to earn a living. If you look me up on city council, it's before I got before I got on city council, if you go back to before 2018, it's. Here's Deb talking about the ethics ordinance. Here's Deb talking about the mobility plan, many, many things. It's except Deb talking about. Deb's. You know, Deb's bottom line. I just don't, I don't do that. That's. I I advocate for other people. But. You know, what he's talking about is is what this idea of having all stakeholders at the table. Says that we need developers who are the people who people who. Profit from cutting down trees. At the table alongside environmental activists. To kind of work out some middle ground solution. You know, and and to me, it's like, you know, if you were having a committee. On, you know, for. On empowering victims of domestic abuse. You wouldn't put, you know, well, let's put some domestic abusers on the table so they can have their their point of view. I mean, it's it would be unconscionable. And I see it, I know this is another extreme example, but if you think about it, it's really not because you've got people who are knocking down trees. And profiting from it, and that's what they do. And I'm not saying that means they're evil, but it just, it doesn't make sense to me if the purpose of this ordinance is tree preservation. Then the last people that should be at the table are the people who profit from taking down trees. That's a conflict of interest. And so again, you know, it's not just my opponent who sees it that way. But it's the way that the city has done business for a really long time and it has led to really weak tree or really weak tree ordinance. It's led to impact fees. That are way out of date. Because you've got developers who are coming to the table saying, hey, we don't want to pay. The the full cost of service. And and that's a problem because then it falls on the taxpayers. So I think that there are really certain stakeholders who should not be at the table. The people who should be at the table are the people who are. Most affected in the sense of most negatively affected. The people who stand to to lose the most, not in terms of the money for their jobs. But the people whose lives are at stake. And because trees clean our air. We and we've got F rated air, you know, we need the environmental advocates, we need people who just regular people who live in the most polluted parts of town. We need we need them on their committee, on that committee.
So before we wrap this up, one of the things I kind of wanted to touch on is. You know, you're you're a lightning rod for the for the big stories, right? Proud Boys or fighting the gas plants and everything. Especially coming come election time, people like to focus on, you know, the sensational, right? About a year ago, I think probably about a year ago, somebody came to me with a with a concern. About a woman who was trying to flee domestic violence and was not able to secure an apartment for her children. Because they couldn't get past the. Basically, the utilities requirements to set up service. You know, I passed that on to you and very quietly, very quietly. Basically, regulations were changed that from from this day forward. Will enable people fleeing domestic violence, a slightly. Better, a slightly more accessible path to to safety. And that's something that not that doesn't get discussed a lot. I I know a lot of people come to you. With concerns and things that you move on to the departments and everything that don't get discussed on the dais. Can you tell us about your experience, your experiences working with people, you know, one on one and your drive to to help the people of Denton?
Yeah, and thank you so much. Thank you so much for asking about that. And you know, the story you mentioned, I mean, it was really beautiful to me. I mean, it was, it was. While it was happening, it was scary and infuriating, but in the end it was really a beautiful thing. It would in the. Sense of it really was, it was like we were a basketball team, you know, because you got past the ball. From it wasn't even directly from the. The the person we were advocating for was someone who was at her church, who was advocating for her, who reached out to you and you reached out to me. And it was about, yeah, not only the the domestic abuse situation was part of it. But it was also an immigration situation and her. She couldn't get a utilities account set up on her own because she was leaving an abusive relationship. Her husband was a or partner, whatever, was a. A a US citizen and she was, she was totally legal. But she she had, was paying taxes with a ITIN number. And for some outrageous reason, really no reason, no good reason. DME or rather customer service didn't take an ITIN number. And so I was so pleased with our staff. It was when. Krista. Who's the the new, I guess maybe not so new anymore, but I still think of her as new head of customer service. You know, I reached out to her to say, this is a problem. What's going on here? I was all prepared for a fight. I get all my adrenaline's rushing. I'm prepared for a fight. And she said, that is absolutely a problem. We got to work on this. You know, and so it was really, really teamwork. And just people helping people, helping people, and it happened relatively fast. And like you said, it was quiet. A lot of my, the work that I do, probably most of it, you know, I don't keep a log. If I did, I would just be, you know, overwhelmed. It would just be too overwhelming to see how many hours, because it really is, it's a labor of love. I myself don't get, don't get paid for it. Because I already have a government paid job from working for a public university for UNT. So. Can only take one of them, but. A lot of the time is spent with people. Who turn to me because they hear, because I have a reputation that I'm really proud of as a champion of the underdog, basically. You know, if you're having problems with, if your power is going to get turned off. If you're homeless, you know, Deb will, and you know, Keely has that reputation too. You know, there's, there's somebody on council who is going to, even if they don't know what the solution is. They're going to listen. And if you are in the city of Denton. They're not going to say, oh, no, that's not my jurisdiction because you're somebody in Denton. Who's got a problem, we want to at least find out how you can get help, you know, even if we're not the ones who can help you. I spend a lot of time doing that and I'm really driven just by sheer adrenaline because people tell me these stories of just injustices. And just tragedies. Tragic situations that where I'm just so moved, you know, I could be really tired about to go to sleep and it wakes me up. And and I just, and it's such a good feeling to be able to help someone, really help them. I will say, though, that it's heartbreaking not only to see this tragedy, but to see that so many of these situations, especially utility shut offs is our great example. Where I spent so much time and so does staff dealing with people on an individual level and I love to do this, to help people. To fight, to keep their power on, to show, look, this is a single mom who's got three kids, one has disabilities, they're all in connected learning, they're being sent back in school. You know, they did everything right. They asked for assistance. She works her butt off. Her car broke down, so she needed a new car and that set her behind. And so now you're saying she has to pay this much more on top of. What she already owes because of her credit based deposits, et cetera. All the time we spend dealing with people at the individual level, we could be making legislative changes, policy changes across the board. That would make it so we wouldn't have to go case by case by case. You know, because even though I treat people really respectfully, I just treat people like people. You know, it's humiliating for people to have to go saying, please help me, you know? We we need to have policies where people can just kind of take for granted. That you don't have to go. You know, begging for help just to keep your power turned on. And we can do that through better legislation. So as much as I love helping people. And, you know, feeling like a superhero and all the teamwork involved, I would actually much prefer. To just legislatively say, okay, we're going to pass a law saying we are not going to turn the power off. Or water off for 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 residences. We're not going to, and we're going to figure out. How to make that work because that's a public health and safety hazard. That would also save us a lot of, it would save money and staff time too. It would certainly save me a lot, save me a lot of time. Anyway, you know, I'd feel less like a superhero, but that's not the point, making me feel like a superhero. You know, the point is good government. So I'd like to see a lot more of that good government and less superhero vigilante superhero.
So so real quick, you dropped something in there and I want to make sure I I heard it right and I don't think I knew, I don't think I knew this. But but you mentioned that you, because you work at UNT, you actually don't get paid for city councils. Is that correct? So so everything that you do is free. Technically.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
There you go. So if you want to save a few bucks on a city council person. Vote Deb.
Yeah. Well, I, you know, for me, it's really, it's this public service. I compare it to an addiction. I'm so, like I said, I get this adrenaline rush. I'm so driven by it. So it's, you know, you don't need to pay an addict to keep doing the thing they're addicted. That gives them that rush, you know? It's kind of a dark metaphor, but it's really how it feels. It's just a labor of love. It really is. It really is. And the people deserve so much better than what they're getting, so much better. And I'm just driven by. You know, when I think about it, I look up, my eyes go up because I just imagine the the better world. That is possible. That is totally possible. I see it in our budget. I see we have the money to do things without raising taxes. I see these things that are called pipe dreams that are not pipe dreams. I'm also, I'm really proud to be a member of Local Progress, which is a collaborative group of progressive identified. Elected officials and nationwide, but also Local Progress Texas. I'm on the board of that. And was one of the the original. Founding members and we meet and compare notes, see what other Texas cities are doing. You know, things that our city attorney will tell us is not possible, but then you see, well, they're doing this in Austin. They're doing it in San Antonio. And and that's really exciting to know what's possible and to keep working for that.
All right. Thank you so much, Deb, for joining us. We're gonna just have you say a few quick words, speak for a few minutes about. You know, why people should vote for you, just give a closing pitch about why people who are voting for place five should choose DeMar Inter.
Well, thank you. Well, first of all, thank you so much for having me. Denton Matters and Tasman and Tamsin, Tamsin and Matt. And Matt, Tamsin and Matt, you're allowed to call me Bed, get my consonant reversed for that. Dangerous bed. Anyway, thank you so much. You guys are wonderful and doing a great public service. You know, I'll I'll say, you know, I get people who don't like me. Think of me as someone who has an agenda. And it's interesting to me because I, my my agenda, any agenda I have is given to me. By the public. I really feel like I'm a vessel. I think people give me way too much credit for having original ideas. I don't think anything I've put forward. Or maybe every once in a while I'll come up with an original idea of, oh, maybe we could do it this way. You know, something on the spot in the work session room. But the things that I actually put forward to council come from the public, come from other people. So I really do, I feel like a servant. And it's, it's, it's hard to explain. You know, what, how, what I love so much about that, mostly it really is just making democracy happen because. You know, democracy is like a religion to me. I do, I have a religion, you know? But the, but I believe in separation of church and state. And so my political religion is democracy, the belief in, you know, government, other people, by the people, for the people. I believe in bottom up leadership, you know, empowering people from the bottom up. I don't believe. In trickle down economics and I don't believe in 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 top down leadership. I believe in truth and transparency. I hate, and hate is a strong word, but I hate gaslighting. I hate greenwashing. Sometimes I feel like. Those things are the biggest problem in the city when, and just in politics in general. You know, when we're more concerned with with looking good than we are with being good. That is, can be the biggest obstacle to progress of all. And democracy is really the solution to that and the transparency that comes with democracy. So I think I think that's why people should should vote for me because, you know, no matter who you are. You know, and I don't care, I mean, I identify as, I'm obviously very progressive. You know, in my political views, I don't care how you identify politically. Or identify another, any other way. If you've got a problem, it's in City of Denton, I want to help you. You know, even if, you know, yesterday and I've had, there have been people who I've advocated for. Who one day, you know, they are opposed to me for something and then the other day they're saying, Deb, please help because I've got an issue. And I let bygones be bygones. I mean, in a snap, it is, it doesn't even feel like it's a big effort for me. Because I just love solving problems and I truly believe that, you know, we need to not not play favorites and say, oh. Cause I just love solving problems and I truly believe that, you know, we need to not, not play favorites and say, I'm just going to help. The people who are nice to me. I'm just going to help my friends. I'm just going to help the, the perfect victims. Um, I, I, I want to help everybody, make government work for everybody. And, and that's why I think people should vote for me.
All right. Thank you so much. Once again, Deb, thank you. Thank you for joining us. Um, for everyone watching. Just some quick reminders. Early voting starts October 13th. That's Tuesday. Election Day is November 3rd. Remember, please remember that municipal elections are at the very, very bottom of your ballot. You will have to go all the way through your ballot and there's not going to be a D or an R next to anybody's name. So you're really going to have to. Be educated about who you want to vote for, be um, educated about who you're making a choice for. And please, if you. If you have made that decision, if you are educated on these issues, please tell your friends and your family members, um, so that they can also be educated. So I want to thank Deb again. Thank you, Matt. My name's Tamsin. You're here because Denton matters and we're here for you because Denton matters. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.